Board of Education to order at 6:00 PM. Looking to see if there are any comments for closed agenda for closed session. Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session and reconvene at 7:00 PM. Good evening, everybody. We are going to reconvene this regular meeting of the Board of Education for the Escondido Union School District. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Houston to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All members are present, and we do have a report out of closed session.
Thank you. Closed session item report. In closed session, the Board took action to approve the recommendation for appointment of Jose Hernandez as elementary school principal beginning July 1, 2025, by a vote of five to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Hernandez. Two more to report out in a while.
Mr. Hernandez, right now.
Good evening, President of the Board, Dr. Ibarra. My name is Jose Hernandez, and I have been part of the USD family for over 21 years. And I am delighted to accept the principal position at Lincoln Elementary School. My recent AP experience has prepared me well. I have already had the privilege of meeting many of the students and staff and members of the Lincoln community. I am eager to challenge myself in this position and collaborate with teachers, parents, and site leaders. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Moving on. In closed session, the Board took action to approve the recommendation for appointment of Shannon Reskey as elementary school principal beginning July 1, 2025, by a vote of five to zero. Congratulations, Shannon.
Hello. Good evening, President Paulson, School Board, Dr. Ibarra and Cabinet. My name is Shannon Reskey, and I'm delighted to accept the principal position at Bernardo Elementary. I've been part of the EUSD family for over 28 years, and I actually was a student here, and my kids went here also. So I look forward to this new challenge, and I feel my experience in EUSD has prepared me for this position. I look forward to meeting the students, staff, and the Bernardo community. I'm eager to challenge myself with this position and collaborate with all the stakeholders. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Congratulations. And finally, in closed session, the Board took action to approve the recommendation for appointment of Marcy Karofsky as Project Specialist 3, beginning July 1, 2025, by unanimous vote of five to zero. Congratulations, Marcy.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Paulson, Trustees, Dr. Ibarra and Cabinet. Thank you for this incredible honor to serve as Project Specialist 3 in our expanded learning program. My last 13 years in Escondido as a kindergarten teacher, three years as site liaison, three years as intervention teacher, as well as the experience of being a team member on our Cohort 1 redesign, have prepared me for this role. These experiences have also deepened my commitment to serving our staff and our students here in the Escondido School District. I'm truly grateful for this opportunity to work with Rick Oser, Joanne Fox, and Cesar to expand learning opportunities and create a meaningful impact for all of our stakeholders in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one more report out of closed session. The Board is pleased to report that, following careful consideration, we intend to move forward with the appointment of Andy McGuire as the incoming superintendent of the Escondido Union School District. His contract will be presented for approval at our next regularly scheduled board meeting on Tuesday, June 24. If approved, Mr. McGuire will begin a year-long transition alongside Superintendent Dr. Luis Rankin-Zibara, formally stepping into the role on July 1, 2026. This planned transition year provides a strategic opportunity for the district for intentional leadership development, continuity of initiatives, and a thoughtful handoff that honors the work already underway. It also reflects the Board's commitment to stability, long-term planning, and ensuring our students, staff, and community remain supported throughout this process. Andy McGuire brings four years of dedicated service as Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. His collaborative leadership, focus on student-centered operations, and strong relationships across departments have positioned him well to lead EUSD into the future. His integrity, fiscal responsibility, and clear communication have earned widespread trust throughout our district. We are also deeply grateful to Dr. Ibarra for his 11 years of service and his willingness to guide and support this leadership transition. Over the next year, we look forward to creating opportunities for staff, families, and the community to connect with Mr. McGuire as he prepares to take on this important role. Thank you. All right, moving on, we are going to the approval of the agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please vote.
Oh, do I have to sing?
The agenda? I had to pull an item.
All right. Standing by.
Is my mic on? Okay. So I need to pull item J2, and to be brought back at a later board meeting.
All right. Pulling item J2, continuing on with the approval of the agenda as amended, please vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, passes five to zero. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Mr. Houston moves. Ms. Gardner seconds. All in favor, please vote.
I think Lilo should sing our intro, outro.
There we go. All right, and motion passes five to zero. Thank you all very much. Thank you all so much for your attendance today. Please feel free to go home and spend the evening with your families. All right, moving on to public comments. We do have one card calling Andrea Seema.
As you can see, yes, hat, ready for summer. Okay, so hello, Dr. Ibarra, President Paulson, Cabinet, guests, and staff present, and all in the virtual world. Thank you for being here. I am here tonight to preface the hypocrisy of what might present, actually did present itself tonight. We have a design team that is built with carefully chosen committee members of all areas of staff and interested parents in our district. It is sad to say that the design team has not been approached with even a survey of what is still needed and new ideas brought forth in over a year. And we have not had the chance to discuss or give feedback on a very prominent position that you just talked about. We should be evaluating with pre and posts in our design team. We should be talking about growth, no growth. How is the learning collaborative demonstrated growth in our district? They pretty much run our design team, and you are proposing to continue to pay them almost $400,000 of taxpayers' money. How are they demonstrating effectiveness and support our academic growth? That's what people want to know. Do we need to go back to the saying, "It begins with me"? I know, I come to work every day, and I do my job, and I do see growth in our students, but it's not enough. We're not doing enough. Your union supports educating our youth. Involve us. We are begging you to allow your people, who give their sweat, sometimes blood, and often tears, to move this machine in the right direction. Truly, it has to start with you. How are you involving the community? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Moving on to item E2, Public Hearing Regarding the Local Control Accountability Plan.
This would be the public hearing portion of tonight's presentation, so if anybody from the public would like to speak about our LCAB.
And do we have any speakers? Seeing none, we are going to close this hearing and move on to item E3, A Public Hearing Regarding the Adopted Budget and Access Reserve. Are there any speakers for this hearing? Seeing none, we will close this hearing and move on to item 4, The Public Closure of Limitless Learning Academy. And although there are no speakers on this one either, I would like to ask, just to be, for absolute clarity, is Limitless Learning Academy as it is designed? Is it closing, or is it simply moving to a program within a school?
It is moving to be a program within a school. In such, some of the support staff will not be a part of that, but we will have four teachers and will be accommodating the students that are currently enrolled this year as they matriculate through that program.
So Limitless Learning Academy is continuing, and for a student going through the program, a student that's already enrolled, they will see within their education, it's going to remain pretty much the same. The difference is, we won't have a separate principal, a separate office, staff, program specialist, all of those other positions. Is that correct?
That's correct. Just the one caveat to that is that there is somebody, a clerical staff that works for the homeschool program that'll be moving to a full-time position in order to support some of those needs for the limitless students.
Okay, I think that's very important because that Limitless Learning Academy program has been very successful, as we've seen. And it's very important for those students and families, so very happy to hear that that will be continuing. If there is no other comment, we will close this public hearing. Moving on to item 5, A Report from CSEA Chapter 150.
Well, good evening, everyone. Well, I'm just going to read off what is here, okay? No jokes today. Just going to behave. I proudly stand here as the President of CSEA. I speak not only on behalf of classified staff who dedicate their lives to the district, but also on behalf of the students whose futures are shaped by decisions made in this room. Tonight, I must speak candidly about the process surrounding the hiring of our next superintendent. Let me be clear, this is a moment of incredible importance. The selection of a superintendent is not just an administrative task. It is a moral and strategic commitment to the value we hold as a district, values of equity, excellence, collaboration, and student-centered decision-making. And yet, the process thus far has felt troubling, opaque. When decisions are made behind closed doors, when voices from the classroom, sites, and departments are not actively invited into the conversation, the message that's sent is not neutrality, it's not efficiency, it's indifference. And indifference, whether intentional or not, is a form of harm. Lack of transparency erodes trust. It silences those who know our schools best. It tells our educators that their insight is not valued, and worse, it tells our students that their life experiences... I'm sorry, I'm just very disappointed. Not because it's Andy. I'm just disappointed in the process. It tells our students that their lives, experiences in our classrooms do not matter in shaping the future leadership of this district. We cannot afford to treat this hire as a matter of convenience or expeditancy. We must treat it as a matter of deep responsibility. We ask for, what we ask for is very simple. A transparent, inclusive process, a clear and public outline of how decisions are being made and how and who is involved, a meaningful opportunities for staff, parents, and, yes, students to share what kind of leader they believe this district needs. We are not asking to micromanage. We are asking to be respected partners in shaping the district of our schools because the superintendent does not lead alone. They lead in concert with every educator, every staff member, and every student, and every family. So let's be clear. Transparency is not a burden. It is a basic requirement of ethical leadership. It is what builds trust and ensures our district moves forward, united, not fractured. This moment is not just about hiring a superintendent. It is about choosing what kind of district we want to be. Do we want to be the district that values collaboration, voices from the ground, and shared vision, or do we want to be adrift further from those ideals in the name of expeditancy? We urge you, our Board, to lead with integrity, openness, and courage. Include us, hear us, work with us, and together we will build stronger, more equitable future for every student we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the Escondido Elementary Educators Association.
Good evening, President Paulson, School Board members, Dr. Ibarra and Cabinet. I want to begin this evening by thanking all of the hard-working, certificated staff that have proven their dedication and commitment to serving the community of Escondido and its children. I want to recognize the incredible work that is done in classrooms and support staff each day. Thank you as well to all of our classified staff members who support our school sites. As the President of the Escondido Elementary Educators Association, I am here to speak on behalf of the certificated staff of our district who reach out to me for support. I am here to make that membership's voices, make sure that their voices are shared. There are times that I am criticized for standing here and sharing the certificated staff's frustrations. I represent the members of this district, and my role is to speak for those who request for me to do so. I work for our certificated staff and the students of this community. Neither side wants to hear about the things we do wrong. However, as leaders in this district, we must hear the good, the bad, and the ugly, and that's what I am here to do. Our certificated staff are questioning the leadership in our district as there have been so many rumors, not anymore, floating around that they don't understand what's true and what's fiction. California Education Code 35028 states that, quote, "A person shall be eligible to hold a position as a district superintendent unless the person is a holder of both a valid school administration certificate and a valid teacher certificate unless the person is employed as a deputy, associate, or assistant superintendent in a purely clerical capacity," end quote. I've been told that there is a waiver that permits you to appoint Mr. McGuire to this important position. However, he has no teaching experience. He's been in our district for four years and has never led a school site. He has no ties to the Escondido community. We have a shifting of principles, and there is a lot of cabinet leadership changes. This is not the time to rush to this decision. The secrecy and the lack of transparency doesn't promote a climate of trust within our district. Both certificated and classified staff have asked for a search to be done to find the best qualified person to run the district, and we want to understand why you are rushing to make this important decision. In your own Board Governance Handbook, the mission of the district is as follows. The Escondido Union School District, in partnership with our children, employees, parents, and community members, is committed to universal student achievement. Partnership with the community seems to have been lost here. In that same handbook, you have four focus goals, one of which states, "Positive culture and diversity. Continue to build a collaborative culture which promotes creativity, responsibility, and trust among all stakeholders, where diversity and equity are valued. Trust among stakeholders has been broken when you hide your plans from stakeholders you are sworn to represent. I don't take my responsibility as an elected leader lightly, and nor should you." And finally, from the handbook, "School Board Trustees are the representatives of the people elected to ensure the district schools educate the children in consideration of the interests of the local community. The role of the school board is to govern the school district, and your responsibility is to do the right thing for the people you represent. So please don't do what's easy, do what's right. As a mentor and a support system for our site administrators, our superintendent should have the experience to guide our site admin in a direction that supports them with their leadership challenges. The person who sits in the superintendent's seat should be able to understand what our site administrators need and properly onboard them when they are newly hired to their respective positions. As you are all aware, AAA put out a survey to certificated members asking what they would like to see in our new superintendent. One of the questions regarding the experience needed to be a superintendent gave three choices, all of which could be chosen. Here are the results of the 456 who answered the survey. 65.1% of these answers are staff members of USD. 34.9% of them are both residents and staff of USD. 91% said that they must have 10 years or more of teaching experience to be our superintendent. 74.8% said that the person must hold an administrative credential and have experience in school site leadership as required by ED code. .7%, that's less than 1%, said that no experience in education was necessary. And 61.6% of the respondents said they wanted a search to be done. A major concern that came up this year causing mistrust was the handling of an administrator in our district who has been verbally abusive to staff members on his site. The district leadership listened to the stories, investigated the stories, and handled this administrator by giving him a new position at the district office. This particular administrator was also in charge of our new principals to mentor them. AAA has over a decade of documentation of complaints, and although there are many who support this administrator, I am here to support the many who have been demoralized by this man. Why was a new position created for him as opposed to returning him to the classroom? And I can think of several of our site administrators who would have thrived in his new position. And let me be clear, the principals in this district are amazing. We have a few that need some help. We are not calling for punishment. We're calling for transparency. We are asking that the processes that are in place for making important decisions be followed and honored. We recognize that you have the ultimate say in what your decision will be regarding our new superintendent, but we are asking for you to explain how you come to your decision. If we are going to be truly collaborative, then let's be collaborative. And if you have no intention of being collaborative, then just let us know, so we don't continue to have faith that we are valued. Accountability isn't just for teachers. It should begin at the top and show the community that we have integrity as a district, that we make decisions not out of loyalty to our friends, but out of dedication to our students. They deserve that. It's a moot point to do the search now, but find someone qualified to run this district. Involve parents, educators, and students in the process as you were elected to do. I make a solemn promise to you that if you make a decision that is not in the best interest of our community and our district, I will stand at this podium and hold each and every one of you accountable, and I will not be alone. It is now up to you to make the right decisions and stand by them. Thank you.
All right, all written communications have been distributed. Moving on to item F, Consent Items. Are there any items to be pulled for separate consideration? All right, we are going to pull item I2. No, I don't think so. I don't think it's I2. No. Ospired Education. Got it. Okay, so item I2 is being pulled for separate consideration and vote. All right. Then let's vote on the remainder of the consent items unless there is something else. All right, looking for a motion for the consent agenda, except item I2. But J2 is pulled. It's not on the agenda any longer. All right, Ms. Gardner moves. Mr. Olson seconds. All in favor, please vote. Please, and motion passes five to zero. All right, moving back to item I2, Agreement with Ospired Education. Can we get some background on this, please?
Yes, this agreement is with Kimberly. Kimberly Israel is starting her own consulting group, and we're going to need her help to help with the continuity of the Community Schools Grant. We've got a new person that we just hired, and Dr. Philia directly supervised this person, so the two people most familiar with the grant and kind of where we are, we don't want to lose momentum, so this will allow us to contract and provide some additional support as needed with Kimberly.
And discussion.
Okay, so my position is, when I read the presentation and the contract, that last meeting, we had Kimberly Israel come before us because she was retiring cheerfully, and I had no idea that she was forming her own contracting business, but here we are. We had a year of the Community Schools Grant. We received a report on the progress, and we hired someone to take Kimberly's place. But now, in the year that passed, my position is that Kimberly Israel should have been preparing whoever was going to take her place, or the entire team, that she would be leaving, and she needed to leave some continuity behind. So I can't, it just galls me that we're going to pay a person who was in charge of the program and who left the program, resigned, to come back now and consult on how to run the program from the outside. So I have to choose to vote against this.
And I understand that, I think my position on this one would be, possibly, it would have been nice if that had been, if that had happened, certainly, the person who is taking over the position wasn't with the district at the time, so couldn't have been trained over the past year. I think the bigger thing to me in this case, though, is our primary goal here is providing excellent services to our students. So now we have a leadership, I don't want to say a leadership vacuum, but we don't have someone who can oversee this with the knowledge at the level that Kimberly Israel had. I will be supporting this, not because it's ideal, but because we really owe it to our students to get them the best possible services and to continue providing the best possible program for them.
I'd like to make another point, which occurred to me. When we first approved the Community Schools Grant, the thought was that it might lean too heavily on the social-emotional side and not enough on the academic side. So we tried to make clear, in my mind, I tried to make clear that it would focus heavily on the academic as well, and that we'd have someone lead it that way. So I thought this was an opportunity, maybe, because I know Kimberly Israel basically was, is a social worker. That's her bent. So I thought we would focus more heavily on the academic again, and I don't know why that can't be the case now. I mean, we do have qualified people. We have people who've been working in this program now, the Community Schools Program, throughout the district at the designated schools, and who have it rolling along. I would think they don't need constant supervision, so... In any case, that's my, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Harper?
I just, I agree with Joan. Is there any concerns that this will not be, that the person that we put in charge of this will not be able to... of this will not be able to keep it flowing? If it was a brand-new program, I could see the concern, but it's already a year in. Things are in place. And now, we're going to pay an outside consultant to assist the new director or the new person in charge to keep it flowing. And I, I, I have a concern with that.
Right.
Because if, if there was a concerned reference, this person coming in and doing the job, would we not then find someone that we had no concern with?
There's no concern about them able to do the job, we just need somebody to kinda orient them on what has already been established because the Community Schools Progress, every school is working on their, there are some oversight responsibilities and really, the logistics is where everything is. I wouldn't be able to, the, the person who best knows is Kimberly and Dr. Philia also was the one that was directly overseeing that program. So, we just need someone to orient them and get them up to speed so that we don't lose the momentum that we have.
Mr. Olson.
Thank you. I too share the concerns. I have a, you know, from the looks of things, it looks strange. In reading the contract, it does... We have options. It, it sounds like this is a not-to-exceed dollar figure and we will only be billed for the services that are rendered.
Absolutely.
So, I guess the question I have is, should we support this? Will the board be getting regular updates to, to the questions that have been asked? If we feel that the individual who now is onsite and on staff to, to govern this is doing an adequate job, then we can sever this contract because it's no longer needed.
Absolutely, yes, we can provide regular updates. I mean, we can get them up to speed, you know, we can even shorten the, the term of it. We just need to have, because there actually are two components. We've got the Community Schools Grant, but there was also the other grant, uh, we call it Chibi. There was another grant that was helping us with the sustainability that provide the, uh, Medi-Cal reimbursable. It's another component that we're able to take advantage of some reimbursements to be able to now recoup some dollars that will provide us an adequate funding source to continue some of the mental health services in our district. So, it's, uh, there's certain, uh, there's certain aspects of that we can get Medi-Cal to reimburse us for, certain actions such as like our nurses whenever they offer procedures, but we're looking that now into our social workers and counselors. And she was helping us get that set up. We got that, uh, grant for, what was that? Actually, Patrick has a little bit more background. He could talk a little bit about the Chibi. Yep, come to the mic.
DHCS and the, uh, Medi-Cal, uh, is one of the ways in which we can recoup funds, like Dr. Bar said, for speech and language pathology, school psychology work, nurses' arrangement of programs. They've developed kind of an offshoot of our Medi-Cal billing where, um, a different fee schedule can be utilized and our mental health professionals working in our district can get on a different pay, um, recruitment scale so that they can start billing their own services and we can recruit more of those funds, hopefully, in the effort to make those mental health professionals more sustainable in the district throughout the year. We received an implementation grant from the San Diego County Office of Education. Kimberly was helping supervise the, that program to ensure that we had all the infrastructure in place in terms of having a platform that they could bill. Each provider needs an MPI number so that they can bill through Medi-Cal. So, there's some logistical components that she was supervising. And as we move forward into that, it is gonna be a little bit of a shift for our mental health professionals. So, the hope was that she was gonna, as a part of this contract, continue on supervising that and helping motivate, facilitate our mental health providers in, um, recouping some of the, uh, costs to the good work that they're already doing at our schools.
So, my question is, why didn't she just stay and finish that job when she was employed by the district? That's all.
I think that would call for a bit of speculation that I don't think, uh, Mr. Patrick would be qualified to make.
No, I know, it was a rhetorical question.
I got it, I got it.
And my question, they're currently doing this billing currently correct? And they don't understand how to do that? I, I'm still, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around what exactly the supervisory component is that we can't on ourselves figure out, the employee themselves can't figure out. Because if it's already in place and we're just trying to increase it, is my question, I mean, do you understand what my question is?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, there, there's a number of different kind of, uh, infrastructure programs that you have to access. There are a number of meetings you have to meet with Medi-Cal as a means to get all of our providers moved from our LEABOP billing system, which they're currently accessing at a lower rate, into the CYBHI, uh, billing software and platform. And although we will work with our existing paradigm company so that they can bill that way, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes logistical components in which those billable hours need to be submitted to a different department and so there's some liaison work that needs to go into that. There's also some professional development that our school social workers and counselors will need as you go through what is necessary to document for each treatment session. Um, the, there's a certain amount of, um, information that we need from parents through our referral for service, so the referral for service form needs to be altered and they need to collect certain information from families that our families have not provided yet. So, there's a number of logistical details still to be worked out.
And, and, and my further question would be is, if this consulting contract wasn't being offered to the district, would we then fall apart?
I, I don't, we would not fall apart. No, we would, we would, uh...
Would we, would we...
We'd get them up to speed, we'd get them up to speed as best we could and they would have to, but it will be a, a much slower process. What we didn't wanna do is lose momentum in this process. So, we'll have to, we'll get them up to speed as much as possible, but it won't be... Our sites hit the ground running last year, it took a while just to get it all set up. We wanted to keep that some momentum, but...
So, I have a question. How complex is this grant? Both of them, both the Community Schools Grant and the, this other one? Because I know about grant reporting, I've been working for the last two weeks about eight hours a day on a grant and I too retired and am still going at it. So, how complex are these?
Are you getting paid to consult?
No, I am not.
Nor, nor am I. Um, the, one, one I would say is far more complex than the other. Community Schools touches all of our, all, eastern every one of our, the schools that are engaged in it. There's a reporting, every school needs to submit reports that are pretty thorough. A lot of data needs to be collected. Many stakeholder meetings need to be, uh, may, they need to be held as well as the Steering Committee for Community Schools. So, I would say that one is, is far more complex and nuanced than, than certainly the Medi-Cal billing, um, component of this, the separate, um, process.
But I think the answer is these are incredibly complex grants and yes, we hit the ground running largely because we had qualified people in place to get us hitting the ground running. And...
You see.
Yeah, that's fine. People led by a person who, who was able to get things running. I just, I, I have the feeling that if we want it to continue running at a, an exemplary clip, we make sure there's a transition. And yes, it's unfortunate that someone retired or, or, or resigned, whatever we wanna call it. Um, but those things happen. And so, I, I mean, I am in favor of supporting our students by making sure this grant runs at the most efficient level possible. Other comments? I'm sorry, has it, have we gotten to you? Because that's my second time around.
The Community Schools Grant is a $20 million grant that we get over five years. So, it is substantial for our district.
So, I had a couple of questions and, and I, I kinda see this in two different areas and I thank you, Joan, for bringing this up to our attention. So, what was the timeline of Kimberly giving notice, we finding the replacement and the replacement started? Was there overlap to that and how long did we have noticed that she, she was going to leave? Because I don't recall and you might not recall it, that's kinda what you...
I can't recall, I do know that we, we hired, we appointed the, uh, the new Community Schools Coordinator at the last meeting.
Right.
And I do know that I just met with her on Monday and Kimberly's last day was, I wanna say, today, Friday?
Oh.
Yeah, so there really is no, there wasn't an overlap.
But you still had to put out a request for people to apply.
And, and she doesn't officially start till July 1st, so, the new person.
Well, because I think, I mean, I think, uh, we should be taking example from like the maintenance department. They have put in place a lot of trainee programs and a lot of overlap for these types of situations so we can continue the services uninterrupted, especially on something as complex as a $20 million grant. And so, that, that is concerning to me of that, that wasn't set up properly and I don't know if she would stay, so I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, um, give a hard time to Kimberly at all. I, I, she did a fantastic job, she loved this grant. I know she would like to help continue it because it, it was so important to her, so I'm not trying to specify. I think it, it's a bigger issue that if we have these larger projects and we're not cross-training or setting up for continuity, because people can leave at any time, they can quit anytime. So, that, that's my one, one part of it. And I'm sure there's tons of documentation of what has already happened this year and what needs to continue. But on the other side, I am not comfortable at all with a former employee coming back so quickly, um, and consulting with us. That's kind of like, you know, you leave Congress and then you turn around and you become a lobbyist. I'm not, again, I know Kimberly loves this project, I'm not saying it specifically about her. I'm saying, in general, I'm not comfortable with someone coming back to our district and, um, trying to get a contractor, you know, consultant, anything like that. That's just as uncomfortable for me, especially so quickly after. It's one thing if it's, you know, five years later, but so quickly after her leaving or an employee leaving, I don't wanna be, again, I'm sorry, Kimberly, I don't wanna be, I'm not trying to be specific to you, but I, I am not comfortable with that situation at all. So, I would not be voting for this. And again, we do, like you said, we have, we hired a very competent person who we were told has experience and we're still working, you know, they're still not done with the, uh, with the billing issue, so she's gonna have to get up to speed. But that's just the, the situation. Again, I'm not comfortable with that.
Mr. Olson.
I don't really have anything further, I've asked my questions. I, I too have concerns about the timing of this and, and what the appearance of this suggests. Not that the work doesn't need to be done, but from a transparency standpoint, I just, I have some concerns that I think could have been avoided. And that's very much what I'm gonna say.
All right, um, and so I would, uh, Mr. Houston? Ms. Gardner, anything else? Okay, so I would just like to also make the point that if we had asked Kimberly to stay on for another month, six weeks, we would have paid not as much, but something similar for a continuation of her salary, um, but we wouldn't have had the time period, uh, for the consulting. And with that, I'm gonna call the question, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the contract and wondering if there is a second. Seeing none, the motion dies and the item, uh, fails. All right, um, moving on, and I'm sorry, I'm, it's gonna take me a minute to get, okay, we've got our LCAP report. Item L1.
So, tonight, this presentation will be our LCAP, our budget, and really what this is, this is the plan for our next school year. Financially, programmatically, just the concept of what our district will be for the next school year. And so, to not belabor that point, we're gonna first start with going through some of the items in our, actually in our LCAP, so we have Kathleen ready to go.
Um, this year will be the second year of a three-year cycle for the '24 through '27 LCAP. I'm gonna be sharing a summary of the actions including, included in this year's LCAP. You might notice, uh, that there are some actions in the LCAP that are no longer funded. Um, I just wanted to explain that once an, within a three-year cycle, once we add an action, we can't remove it from the document, but we can opt to not fund it. So, that's why you would see those actions with, with no funding, um, with the exception of, um, a, a couple that, um, we just simply don't need that action anymore. Most of the actions have not changed from the '24, '25 LCAP, so this evening, I'm only gonna focus on the actions that are new or have changed. So, I'm, I'm projecting all of the actions, but I'll just talk about the highlighted actions. So, the first action is the Framework for the Future and this action covers the contract with the Learner Center Collaborative as well as funding, uh, some subs to release teachers for PD and some extra hours for, uh, teachers to complete some online training. Um, this year, the funding is moving to Educator Effectiveness, which is a one-time state grant, um, which we have to spend down by the end of next school year. Uh, the next thing that's changing is the Homeschool Program and I know you're familiar with the Homeschool Program. Uh, it provides, uh, one teacher and a halftime clerk to support families who wish to be the primary teacher for their, their students. Um, next year, this will be, uh, switching to, um, supplemental concentration funding. Then next, uh, we have Limitless Learning and as discussed earlier, um, Limitless will becoming, will be, excuse me, be becoming a program. And as a program, now it's eligible to be funded, um, with supplemental concentration funding, so we will be funding it with that. Then, you can read, um, all of the, the actions that aren't highlighted. And, um, in Goal Two, which is, um, build a culture centered on, um, whole learner outcomes, including engagement, social, emotional, cognitive, and mental health needs of learners, um, there, this particular goal has the most actions and there are no substantive changes. So, this slide just has the, the rest of the actions. Then finally, Goal Three is around safety, so it's ensuring enabling conditions are in place for a shared vision, enabling policies, resource allocation, trust, and safety. And the one thing that is a substantial change is, uh, enhancing noontime duty support, safety crossing guards and security camera monitoring. Um, you might recall that last year, we, um, asked your approval to add some items to this action in the middle of the school year. So, this represents those changes. It, the item in the original plan from the beginning of, of last year, uh, was just enhance noontime duty, duty support. Um, we added the crossing guards and the security, excuse me, I can't talk tonight, security camera monitoring.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate you breaking it down, like with the first three pages, it's very clear and concise to see the breakdown of the money instead of a big old packet, so I, I appreciate how it's laid out like you did.
I'm glad. Okay, I want to, before I talk about this slide, um, you probably noticed that this LCAP is a little different because the reflection is quite a bit longer because we are now asked to give a little bit of data and reflection on every single action item. So, you'll find that most of the action items have their own data, there were a couple that, that, um, shared some data, like there, there were several...
Several.
Instructionally-based items that, that, uh, shared the iReady data or the, um, CASP data.
Yeah.
And in some of those items, the, the data, particularly in I-ready, showed that there wasn't a lot of growth. And so in the document, I wrote that we would be reviewing end-of-year data. I'm pleased to report that nearly all of the CASP data is in. I think that the last time I checked, the night before last, we were only missing fifty scores in ELA and twenty in math. So they're not, I don't anticipate that they're going to change at all when we look at them district-wide. So as we look at this, this data, just a little reflection on the past school year, which encompassed a lot of change in the area of instruction. We had a lot of intervention and coaching positions that had been in place the prior year. They were eliminated and fourth through eighth grade class size reduction was eliminated. So there, there were quite a few new challenges for classroom teachers. So while our CASPs don't represent the growth we wanted, we, we are pleased that we have some district-wide growth and some of our schools and grade levels have some substantial growth. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about this preliminary data. This is the, the CASP ELA results. And it's comparing last year's results with this year's results. And in ELA, you can see that the percentage of students scoring, scoring at standard exceeded increased by one point three two. The percent of students scoring at met stayed about the same with a slight decrease of point two seven, a little over a quarter of a percent. That gave us a net gain of students scoring at met or exceeded of one point oh five improvement over the, the prior year. Then you also might notice that the, the red area at the bottom is a little bit shorter than it was last year. The percentage of students scoring at standard not met decreased by two point three eight. And it's really important to remember that our goal is always to increase the greens and the blues while we decrease the red. Because we do have a large section of our, our student population that is in the red in, in both assessments. And it's definitely a priority to bring those kids out of that band. Then if you look at math, our math results were a little better than our ELA. The percentage of students scoring at standard exceeded increased by one point two two over the prior year. The percentage of students scoring at met increased by one point oh six, giving us a net gain of two point two eight over the prior year. And then the percentage of students scoring at not met decreased by one point eight six. So we're gonna continue to monitor assessment results as well as classroom observations to develop and adjust our professional development work and, and services. While the gains are small, we believe that they can be attributed to systems and very intentional systems and structures that we put in place last year. And we continually review and adjust. And Mr. Osir is going to speak to those systems and structures next.
So before we leave the data, just, the board will start getting disaggregated data so we can start looking at it by school. And then, of course, we're gonna replicate the data book, the comprehensive data book so we can do a thorough presentation, deep dive into our data in, in August is what we're shooting for. So we can do it much more quicker and relevant.
Well, thank you, Kathleen, and good evening, Board. And really excited to take some time and give a bird's eye view of some of the changes and some of the intentionality behind the twenty-five, twenty-six plan. So this slide is titled Sharpening the Saw, Strengthening from Within. It references Stephen Covey's work. As a young college student coming out of military, one of the first books I read was Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. And it's a book that I constantly am referencing. And so these titled, the next two slides are really titled, Sharpening the Saw. It's very intentional thinking of ways that we collectively will strengthen and find renewal from within as an essential habit. So the other thing that you probably noticed is that, looking at the LCAP, there's not a whole lot of really significant changes happening across the LCAP, and that's intentional. We know that there are significant changes happening in our district. We also know that we're under very challenging financial constraints. And also, this is the second year of our LCAP. So what you will notice is that there aren't any new large initiatives, no curriculum adoptions, no huge changes. Instead, that we are really being very intentional with the implementation of the initiatives that are in, in, in process. Also, this title references that rather than, than the intent is to lean into our greatest resource, which is our EUSD staff, and to strengthen from within. There are many variables that impact student learning. Research shows that the two greatest influencers are the teacher and the site administrator. So these slides will reference the, the efforts that we're taking to really be intentional, outcome-driven, and focus on refinement. This slide that you have in front of you focuses on the greatest impact to student learning, teachers and our instructional staff. The twenty-four, twenty-five PD focus was on tier-two and tier-three intervention. There was a reason for that. As Kathleen mentioned, we had many intervention teachers across the district who were providing that tier-three intervention. Without that body of intervention teachers, a lot of that fell on classroom teachers. And so we created a structure of universal access time and personalized learning and really leaned into that work. And so the professional development was maximizing those, those structures, universal access time and personalized learning. The twenty-five, twenty-six PD is going to pivot. We're now going to actually focus on tier-one instruction. So thinking about the first teach being the best teach. So we're, we're also going to maximize the potential of our teacher leaders as they provide PD throughout the year, starting with our PD kickoff day. So on August thirteenth, we're going to have an optional, yet paid, professional development day where our teacher leaders are going to provide the majority of that professional development. We're really excited about that because there's gonna be two elements. One, our teachers will receive that professional development, best instructional practices, but also our teacher leaders will elevate. And they'll become not only teacher leaders at their school site, but across the district. So once again, strengthening from within. In addition, we will continue to focus on best practices to support our English learners. We know that our English learners require lots of additional support, lots of additional intervention. And so last year, the PD really focused on staff development and during staff meetings and really developing those or implementing those best instructional practices. Kathleen led most of the work with her team, and so that was really well received. We're going to continue that focus, and we're going to focus on beginning of the year, starting with Avid Emerge. So that will once again be an optional PD where teachers will come in, they'll receive this training. And it's avid, avid strategies, but also focused on English learners. And another evidence of that commitment to strengthening from within is continuing to strengthen, strengthen our professional learning communities. This is an area that we have really focused on over the past several years. We know that collective advocacy is the single greatest influencer of student achievement. And so PLC work is the way to achieve that. So we know that the, with the cuts, we've reduced the enrichment wheel. So we will have, elementary schools will have enrichment wheel every other week. But we'll continue to leverage that work. And in addition, we have also identified strategies so that teachers will have, elementary teachers will have additional release time, three-hour blocks or half-day blocks, so that they can do a deep dive into that work. So it might not be every other week, but it will still provide that opportunity. And then something that all of you know is near and dear to my heart is the Expanded Learning Program. Expanded Learning Program continues to be an opportunity where we can provide that additional tier-two and tier-three intervention. There's been a lot of work on maximizing that time, giving teachers the opportunity to provide that instruction as well as students the opportunity to receive that necessary instruction. So we're gonna continue to, to maximize expanded learning opportunities as a, a means to provide additional support. And then finally, in regards to supporting our teachers and instructional staff, we're going to continue to leverage the incredible achievements obtained by the Community Schools Grant and really fortify the district's MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Support. So that's something that we're going to continue to, to lean into and support. So not just the academic face of that pyramid, but also attendance, social, emotional, and behavioral. So these are some of the strategies that we're going to continue to lean into to support our teacher instructional staff. And then, moving on to...
Can I ask a couple of questions? Sorry, on that page. I don't wanna mess up your role. But so how many teachers, and it might be too early for this, how many teachers are signed up for those optional PDs already?
It is too early.
It is too early? Okay.
So, so something that we've been doing over the past several months was we actually identified teacher leaders in the area of differentiation. And we brought together this dynamite team of experts in this area. So classroom teachers who are just highly skilled at providing differentiation. So we met with that team several times towards the middle of the year, towards the end of the year. And it was really powerful, like getting these like-minded teachers in the same room, sharing their strategies and enthusiasm and excitement. It was like mind-blowing. It was just some incredible work that was happening.
Yeah, I, I sat in on that Zoom. It was really impactful. They had a lot of great ideas that they, the other teachers seemed to really grab a hold of. It was really excellent.
So what we...
On the other PD, we do know numbers for that, for the Avid one. It's eighty elementary and, am I on it? Eighty elementary and thirty middle school, thirty, thirty middle school teachers are doing the Avid Emerge training. So that one, we do already have sign-ups for.
Out of, wait, so fifty, did you say thirty and ten? Eighty. Oh, eighty, sorry.
Eighty and thirty. Eighty elementary and thirty middle school teachers are signed up for that training.
So about ten percent?
It's a two, a two-day training.
About ten percent?
Sure.
And then on the August thirteenth PD, we are actually in the process of receiving nominations for workshops. The teacher's going to lead the workshops. And then, once we have that menu complete, then we will reach out to the teaching staff and invite them to sign up for the, for the workshops. So they're actually gonna have about probably twelve to fifteen different sessions every hour that they can choose from. So it's really responsive to teacher needs. So thinking about, if I'm a second-grade teacher and I want to enhance my, my skills in providing differentiated core instruction in this area, then I'm gonna go to that workshop. And then the next session, I'm going to use a workshop that meets my needs. So it's all gonna be teacher-driven and provide lots of teacher choice.
Is that ever tracked, like the teachers that do participate in these PDs, if they see the growth throughout the year?
That's something that we haven't done before, but that is actually a really great question and, and great insight. Something that we could do. Because the, the goal is, is to bring tier-one, right, tier-one?
It comes down to tier-one. That's, you know.
And...
That's the only way we're getting out of this, is tier-one.
Exactly. And so we've really shifted the model to think about, before the message was tier-one core instruction. But we know that effective teachers differentiate in tier-one. They don't wait for tier-two.
Right.
They don't wait for students to struggle. Yes, some students are going to struggle, but really, if, if we plan intentionally and we plan with the scaffolds and the differentiation in, in mind, and we learn from each other's best practices, then we will be more successful with tier-one. There'll always be a need for tier-two and tier-three intervention. However, if we can plan intentionally, then we'll be able to reduce the need for it. Tier-two is a direct response to the first teach.
Right.
So let's not wait for students to struggle. Let's provide those resources and supports in the, in the first, in the first teach.
So how is that, if that's the focus, how is that being monitored through the year? Like what, what kind of, because you're talking about you're focusing on supporting English learners and that type of thing. So we have the PD, but then, and then you have the PLC time. How else is it being monitored and shaped throughout the year? Or am I, and if I'm getting ahead of you, I apologize.
That's actually a great leeway to the next slide. So the next slide really leans into the, the work that we've been doing with the administrators. So thinking about our administrators and a big part of that work was, was the... First of all, we implemented a new strategy this year. Well, this, you know, year that's now concluding, the administrative dashboard. That was something that we, as a district leadership team, rolled out and supported principals with. It was a great initiative and really had a huge impact on... I am on the right slide. Had a really huge impact. But also, we didn't roll it out in, in July when principals returned. We actually waited and then rolled it out in August, introduced it September. And it was really like October by the time we actually got some traction with it. We know the course. We know where we need to go. And so we're gonna continue to lean into that strategy. And, and what it does is it really helps administrators create a laser-like focus. This year, we're going to make some changes to it. We're gonna continue to be data-driven and really focus on building that culture of data-driving decisions. And then, as I mentioned, we're gonna start that work this summer. So we're not going to wait for the, you know, October when the year is already underway. So that's gonna be a key, key piece. Something else that we really focused on last year was schools and teams doing a really thorough needs assessment. So looking at the data and identifying, like, what is the data telling us? And then engage in root cause analysis. That's something that, that we, Kathleen actually led a lot of this work, giving teachers this opportunity, or principals this opportunity to ask the question, why? So if the data is telling us a story, ask the question, why? And don't stop after the first response. Keep asking why until we get down to what is the root cause. So if you have a grade level that is accelerating in, in math, keep asking that question, why? Why do we see this, this impact with this grade level? If you ask it long enough, you'll actually get down to, to the, the root cause of it, which then you want to, to share across the, the school staff and, and really focus on it. Now, if you have a grade level that is struggling in an area, then you want to continue to ask that same question, why? Why are we seeing these results? And don't just stop at the first answer, because it's never the first answer. You have to go deeper and deeper and deeper. So we're gonna continue to do, emphasize needs assessment and root cause analysis. And then we're going to focus on enhancing school-wide systems and structures. That was the big focus this year, universal access time, MTSS, ELOP, leveraging these, these systems, PBIS. So that was the big, big focus this year with principals, identifying those systems and structures. We're gonna continue to do that work, but we're gonna be more intentional. Now, we're going to say, what is the single structure or, or system that you're leaning into? And then go back to that needs assessment and root cause analysis and then identify a school-wide instructional practice. And that school-wide instructional practice should not be something that is in a book or in a plan and no one sees. Whenever any of us visit the schools, it should be transparent. Not only in academic achievement, but also in student engagement and school culture and climate. So when schools have that really laser-like focus and everyone knows what the mission is and the, the, the purpose, then that's where you actually see those significant changes. And the key part to that is celebrate, monitor, focus, get that feedback, and then celebrate the successes. So not just focusing on, you know, we're not there yet, but actually celebrating. So that's gonna be part of it. And then also, we're really going to continue to lean into strategic instructional leadership. As, as I mentioned, the two greatest factors are our teachers and our site administrators. As, as I mentioned, the two greatest factors are our teachers and our site administrators. But site administrators need to continue to be, to develop their instructional leadership. So we'll continue to support principals with that through our walkthroughs, through our coaching sessions, and through really expanding their professional learning network. So when they have the opportunity, which they've had lots of opportunities this year, to collaborate and share their best practices, that's where we've seen the greatest impact. So those are the two areas, just kind of like, you know, bird's-eye view of the, of the plan and the direction that we're going in. And I think, given the circumstances, we're on the right track.
All right. Thank you, Rick. And Kathleen.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to get back into the financials. So as we always do at this time, as we get to the end of the school year, we're still not done with the fiscal year. And so what we have here for you on the left side, this is where we estimate to end the year, what our actuals would be when we finally do close those books at the end of the day on June 30th. And that work, that closing the books will continue on, and we'll present that actually to your unaudited actuals, it's called, in September. So there's a lot of work ahead of us, but this is based on where we, where we're at as of a little bit ago, where we estimate forward how to end. But then, on the right, that represents the adopted budget that tonight we're just presenting to you. Of course, that's for adoption and by vote at the next meeting next Tuesday. So we just kind of walk you through that. As you can see, our deficit estimated here on the left is ten, and now it's about eight point six for adopted budget. That leaves us at an ending balance of about twenty million dollars above our minimum reserve. And you can still see some of the commitments that we had made down there. Notably, like we set aside some money for our federal budget stability, just not know, not sure what might change with that, if anything. Michelle's going to talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. But that becomes what we were presenting to you as our adopted budget. But really, let's look at that in the three-year term, because that's really how we measure our, our financial stability and our planning, decision-making. So in previous budget presentations, we've shown you numbers, the red numbers on top. And so those numbers mean the same thing. Those are numbers that you see here within the NYPD, we call it the multi-year projections. Those ending fund balances are based on there being a reduction of expenses of six million dollars in each of those years, or an increase in revenue, or a combination of the both. So as it stands now, we don't project that our revenue is going to grow more than what we show here, based on the projections from the state. And in fact, and we're going to go a lot deeper in this with some analysis that Michelle will come up and show you in a minute. But these are based on the projected COLAs, the adjustment up of our revenues in each of those, of those two extra years beyond next year. And even with that included, to maintain our financial stability and keep our ending fund balance above the minimum reserve, we need to reduce our expenses by about six million in each of those years. Now, I'm going to talk, after we do a bit of an analysis of what got us to this point financially, but then we're going to, I'm going to come back up and talk about some things that are not included in here, because we're also still waiting for the state to finish, the governor to sign the budget to fully adopt the state budget. And so I'll talk to you about that here in a minute. Is there any questions on what you see right here, though? Okay. All right. Michelle, you want to come up and do it?
I'm going to wait for Michelle.
Okay. So you'll get an analysis here of what got us to this point.
Hey, good evening. I really want to dive, 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 dive deep into COLA, the Cost of Living in Adjustment, and how it really impacts our overall budget, not only, not only in this current year, but in our multi-year projections. So the first time we really saw fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six was two years ago, June of twenty-three. And that was our third year in our multi-year projection. At that time, the state was projecting a COLA of three point two nine percent. We had an ADA of ninety-five percent, and that netted us a revenue of two hundred and three million dollars. Fast forward to two years today, sitting here adopting our twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and we're facing a COLA of two point three percent, an ADA of ninety-three, and a revenue projection of a hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. In these two years, we lost revenue potential of fifteen million dollars. It's important to note that two years ago, in June, we were making decisions, and throughout the year, in the last two years, on where we thought we would be financially at the end of the year. The state continues to decrease the COLA. The huge impact of that was this fiscal year, when we were projecting it to be three point nine four percent in twenty-three, twenty-four, and it came in at a one point zero seven percent. That not only impacts us in the year that we get it, but it impacts us throughout the rest of the multi-year projections. Now, I kind of want to go into how the revenue is impacting, or how the COLA impacted us this particular year, particular year. It's important to note, just because COLA is two point three percent, it does not mean that we get an overall increase in revenue of two point three percent. Their driving factor is our enrollment and our ADA. Assuming that we did get a straight two point three percent COLA on our prior year revenue, in twenty-five, twenty-six, we would have had a revenue projection of four point three million dollars. Assuming that our ADA and our enrollment stayed static from this fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, we would actually have a revenue reduction of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars with a COLA of two point three percent. We were losing money. Our projected revenue for this budget is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. That driving force is the TK add-on that we have. We're projecting more TK enrollment next year than we did this year. So that's why you're seeing the increase from had we stayed static with our enrollment. So the question goes, how do you lose a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on a two point three percent COLA? It's how we're funded. You're either funded on your current year ADA, your prior year ADA, or the three-year rolling average. That three-year average came into play during COVID so that we could avoid a fiscal cliff. We did that, and now we're kind of facing the fiscal hill that this has created. If you look at where we think our actual ADA is for twenty-five, twenty-six, it's only a difference of a hundred and seventy-one from twenty-four, twenty-five. We, however, were funded on the three-year average, and we're starting to lose the momentum that we had of being held harmless and, well, being held harmless during those COVID years. And we're actually being, we're actually having a revenue reduction of three hundred and twenty-seven ADA. That's still more ADA than what we actually have. So that's why we're still on the funded three-year average. Really, but the whole purpose of this is to drive home is how quickly things change and how the state's economy impacts our decision-making and our overall budget.
I just want to repeat a point. I stood here two years ago, pretty close to this day, and at that point, looking forward, just looking at those numbers here, see if this is going to work tonight, and it's not. I'm going to go all the way forward. Just looking at these numbers down here, where we were when I stood before you then for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, and what we should expect for the, the next year, we, that has been reduced because of the COLAs being cut across these years that happened since two years ago. And that's about, what, twenty-four million dollars that's been reduced from our revenue from where we thought we were then. And all the decisions we made then, the plans we laid out then, because the state cutting the COLA, of course, also mixing a little bit of our ADA not coming into where we had projected, and enrollment continuing to decline, that's twenty-four million dollars that left our spending power from where I stood here two years ago and presented some of the same information and plans for what we were going to do with that. Though certainly, what's happening in Sacramento and the decisions are being made with school funding are coming home to hurt us here, right here in Escondido. But, that being said, there, like I told you, when we looked at the multi-year projection, there, there are still some things not included in that, because they haven't finalized, the governor hasn't signed the budget. You know, the legislature has approved it, but he hasn't signed it, so we know there's some negotiations still happening. And right now, we're rooting for the governor to come, come out on top of those negotiations. Because the TK add-ons, so we've always gotten a little bit more money per TK kid than other grade levels because of the ratios they require. They need to have a ten-to-one ratio in those TK classrooms. We do that with a teacher and a para, right? And so they gave us a little extra per TK kid more than they did other grade levels to do that. In January, the governor had proposed a number to increase that add-on, basically doubling it. But then, as we've gone through the January proposal, now to the May revise, now to the legislature approving the budget, it's, it's still an increase of more, twenty-three hundred dollars more, but it was supposed to be even more than that. But either way, that, based on our current projections for enrollment, should be an additional one point eight million dollars. Now, that's not a static number, that's not an ongoing, it's, it's an ongoing funding that that would continue, as long as they don't cut that add-on, but then that's always based on enrollment, right? So for our current projected enrollment for next year, that should be worth about one point eight million dollars in addition to what I showed you on that multi-year projection. Then, there was, years ago, coming out of COVID, they had another one of the many different COVID fundings, one-time monies, the Learning Emergency Block Grant, they have a actually different name for it. We were calling it LERT, and we talked about the LERT Plan. And that was just a stand-in for all the different one-time monies that we brought together to, to build our EUSD Plan. Michelle will go into that in more detail a little bit later as well. But when they had issued, that's what you're going to get, and then January to May to adopting the budget, they cut it by a little bit. And so the governor had proposed in January to restore what they had cut by that little bit. And for us, in January, that would have been worth three point seven million more in one-time funding. But now that the legislature has approved and voted to approve the budget as it stands, that's been reduced to two point five million dollars. And again, that's one-time funding. So, governor hasn't signed it yet, chance it still goes back up, leaving a little bit, and every little bit's going to, going to help in what we saw earlier in the multi-year projections. But at this point, based on the legislature's approved budgets, two and a half million dollars of one-time funding restricted funds. And then there's another, a new block grant that the governor proposed in January. And at the time of his proposal, that to us would have been worth about three point eight million dollars in one-time funding, again, another restricted resource. But since that's gone through the May revise and then the legislature approving the budget, they actually reduced that for us to be about worth one point two million dollars. So again, hoping the governor wins the negotiation in his office before he signs it, that that can come up a little bit, because every, again, every bit of that's going to, going to help us. And those one-time monies especially, that's really what built that EUSD Plan, where we used all the one-time monies we had remaining when we came out of COVID to offset a lot of our expenses and build our unrestricted ending balance for us to be able to buy time for the economy to stabilize so we can continue to stay solvent and protect all of the, all of our people. But there's also one more thing that's included in the new budget that we've talked about previously, and now we have a lot more details about it, and that's the Attendance Recovery Program. And really, that's something that ties into some of the work, a lot of the work, all the work that Rick does. And so Rick's going to come up and talk about what is the Attendance Recovery Program and what are we going to do about it?
So it's nice to be back up here, bringing a little bit of optimism to, to the current financial fiscal situation. And so there's a lot of conversation around Attendance Recovery. And so my hope is to give you overview, identify some of the criteria, some next steps, and why EUSD is really primed to, to be able to take advantage of this program. So Attendance Recovery is intended to provide students with the opportunity to make up for lost instructional time due to absences. We know that that's very significant even coming out of the pandemic. So these sessions are offered outside the regular school day. Typically, we would think of like after-school, spring break, summer program, Saturdays. Sounds a lot like ELOP, right? So, so that's a great thing. And students will participate in academic support or enrichment activities while the district recovers average daily attendance funding, so ADA funding. The criteria, once again, aligns perfectly with our ELOP. Instruction must be provided by EUSD-certified staff. Majority of our after-school classes, as well as our summer program, well, majority of the summer, outside of when we have vendors, is provided by EUSD-certified staff, so that's great. Instruction must be standards-aligned. Whenever our teachers are teaching an after-school class or a summer program, it's standards-aligned. We still have some clarifying questions around this, when the state says standards-aligned, we're curious as to what are they defining? Are they defining English Language Arts standards, math standards, VAPA standards, PE standards? So we need some clarity around that. Student-teacher ratio is twenty-to-one for first through eighth grade and ten-to-one for TK and kindergarten. That's directly in alignment with, with ELOP, and so all of our classes meet that ratio. And then ADA is recovered in increments of one hour. So according to this, this program, the Attendance Recovery Program, four hours equals one day of recovered ADA for first through eighth grade. And three hours will equal one day for TK and kindergarten. And then, this is real critical, this is going to be part of the, the quiz that's at the end, so just low hint. Maximum amount of recovered ADA is ten days or the number of school absences, whichever is less. So if a student misses more than ten days, then we can only recover ten of those days. So next steps, these are real, actually very minor steps for EUSD, not so much the case for other districts. But for EUSD, these are minor steps. Kathleen and her team, once again, we've been, as well as the Fiscal Services Team, we've been working on ensuring that we're implementing these next steps right now. We're going to utilize Power School, because we know that right now, we, we use Google Sheets, and we have a gazillion of them. And that would make it really difficult for the Fiscal Services Team to track and turn all of these, these enrichment opportunities, these hours that our students are participating into, recovered, attendance recovery, that would just be a nightmare. Kathleen said it's doable, but, but we think that it would be a lot easier by using Power School, and we're already primed to do that. We're going to start doing that with the summer, with the summer program that starts on Monday. We will also look at structuring our summer and spring programs. Right now, our summer program is three and a half hours, and so, right. So we didn't know that it's actually in increments of an hour. So every day of summer programming, we actually lose a half hour. So we'd probably shift to four hours without EUSD teachers, and then the additional five hours with the, with the, the partner, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club. So that's a, that's a minor shift. And then what we need to do is identify which of our after-school classes qualify for Attendance Recovery. And then, there's going to be a whole lot of behind-the-scenes work. So we're actually in the process of hiring additional staff to join the ELOP team to do some of this work behind the scenes, to make sure that it's all in alignment and that we are in high collaboration with Fiscal Services as well as Kathleen's team. So as I mentioned, turnkey. Our district is really primed to, to take advantage of this program. And the reason why is we, the majority of our classes are teacher-led. And many, many districts have taken this ELOP funding. Instead of creating the structure internally, they've actually turned it over to an outside organization to come in and provide these ELOP classes. It has to be EUS, it has to be district-certified staff leading these classes. If it's someone else, if it's, even if it's a teacher but not employed by the district, working for an outside organization, it doesn't count. So we're primed for that. And then also, as, as, as you know, EUSD has created a culture where our students want to participate in these Expanded Learning Opportunities, as well as where our teachers and staff want to participate in them too. So, so we're really excited about that. So what would this actually look like? We put together a couple of examples here. So summer program starts on June twenty-third, but the Attendance Recovery Program doesn't start until the new fiscal year, so July first. So if we just take student A, and if student A participates in the thirteen days between July first and July eighteenth and receives credit for three hours per day, we lose that point. 1st and July 18th, and receives credit for three hours per day, we lose that .5, because we're at .5 hours, so, it'll be reduced to three, but that, over the 13 days, that would equate to 39 hours. And even if we reduce that to 36, that would actually be nine days of recovered ADA for that student. Now, the school year hasn't even started, and this student has banked nine days. So, as the student is absent, and we lose that ADA, we, Fiscal Services, would work on getting credit for those missed days of school. Another option is, student B attends the Fall Expanded Learning Session, that's from September 15th to just before Thanksgiving. If the student's participating in two hours per week, 10 weeks, that's 20 hours, we have five days of recovered ADA. Combo, this is a trick question. So, student C attends the Summer Academic Enrichment Program, attends the Fall Expanded Learning Session, as well as the Spring Expanded Learning Session. Now, this student received credit for 39 hours for summer, 20 hours for fall, 20 hours for spring session. I was going to cover this and see if anyone could get the answer correct. Obviously, that's a lot of hours, but the student can only receive credit for 10 days. So even though this student has accumulated lots of days, we would only receive recovered ADA for 10. So, just kind of like putting in perspective what our program is currently doing, because EUSD was really thinking forward, is we had 4,237 students participate in the fall session, we had five, over 5,000 students participate in the spring session, and as of Monday, we're going to have over 1,700 students participate in the summer session. So just thinking about moving forward, what that would look like.
Yeah, I have a comment. I just think, I see the logic in the plan, I think it's a good plan, if it's carried out as intended. First of all, not every student who attends the summer program is going to need to make up for 10 days of absences, obviously. We have some kids who miss a lot of school, we have a lot of kids who don't, who might have one or two absences during the whole school year, so you can't count on a huge windfall either, and that shouldn't be the intention, because, and my point is this, and I think the point of the Attendance Recovery is academic, because every time a student is absent, especially for a block of time, they look, there are gaps in their education that we not, might not even be aware of, but that impedes their learning process. So, I think it's really important, you weren't sure, but the fact that it's certificated teachers in our district that are required to teach it, they know their students, they know the district, and I think that's a good plan as well. So I really, I hope we take this opportunity to help kids recover the gaps, not just to see it as a money-making plan, but as an opportunity to help our kids recover academically.
Yeah, that's a great point and a great question. The reality is that we are going to continue to do what we're doing, because it's the right thing, providing academic intervention after-school for students, for all students, regardless if they have perfect attendance, or if they've missed many days. We know that that's a need, and so we're going to continue to do that, because that's what our students need, is that additional academic time.
And oftentimes, oftentimes those gaps start early, in the very foundation of education, and we're, again, that's when they start to fall behind, and can't keep up, and are frustrated. So yeah, I think we need to start really early, making sure that our kids master the basic, the very basic skills.
Yes, we agree too, and what we're seeing is more and more of our teachers are taking advantage of the structure that we put in place for the academic intervention time. So these are teachers, many of them are kindergarten, early-grade teachers, who are actually holding on to a small group of students after-school to provide that additional, as I shared before, that Tier 2 and Tier 3 intervention. So, and that's in English Language Development, it's in literacy, it's in math, and so, we feel really good about this, because we're doing the right thing already, and now there's a possibility of actually having some financial benefits on top of doing the right thing. And so, we're, I think we're primed to benefit, to continue the course with our robust ELOP program, but also to recoup some of the missed ADA.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Oser. We are going to take a five-minute break, we're going to come back to these same questions at 8:40 PM.
Do you think, are we waiting for someone to get back into the room? Okay, someone at home took a break.
Is it time?
I will let you know.
Okay.
Get the gong ready.
Yeah. I just, not on the record yet, because it's not 8:40 yet, but I was talking with the people from the Extended Learning Program at the County Office of Education this week, and I was hearing yet again about the Escondido ELOP program. Apparently, across the county and across the state, districts are sending back to the state millions, tens of millions of dollars in ELOP funding, because they simply cannot spend it. Our district, on the other hand, is not just spending it, but as you are, as you are pointing out, Ms. Gardner, the point to these programs is not to earn money, and it's not to spend money, it's to provide opportunities for education and enrichment that are, they're not necessarily, when we're talking ELOP, going to teach the kids to read, but they are going to give, it's what we're doing is giving them motivation to read, motivation to learn, connecting what they're doing in those programs to maybe what they want to do in the future, and what they're learning in the classroom. So, I just, once again, was extremely proud of the, of our district's ELOP program, in addition to other programs, but our emphasis on academics and on providing our students excellent opportunities. And with that, it is 8:41, and we're ready to continue.
Did you have any more questions on this, before I wrap up this slide? So, we added, included in this, that there is a revenue potential that the state still has not released, they've given us the rules how to get to the ADA recovery, but have not released how that funding will be given to us, how it's earned, and whatnot. It's being treated differently than Saturday School, which is an existing program, so we're still waiting for that to be updated from the state, so we can even address, you know, assess what our revenue potential could be, but again, that's not the point, and this is great, because we're already doing all of these things and building into this already with our after-school enrichment, summer school, springtime, all the time we can possibly get with these kids in enrichment. That's what's been our focus all along. Now, we just happen to be able to earn some revenue by doing what we're already doing, and many of our peers are not, to your point.
So the one question I would have then, is, it seems strange to me that you could bank these hours in advance.
It seemed too good to be true, we had to keep looking it up.
You would think it would be retroactive.
Yeah, we had to, we had to keep verifying that, but yeah, that's the way that it's written, so.
And I'm sure you will continue to monitor that, because I, like Ms. Gardner, like yourself, when I heard banking of hours, having run Saturday's school programs for 25 years, I, that one is difficult for me to wrap my head around.
Absolutely.
And I imagine that there could be some updated guidance from the state.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll keep up on that.
And as we know more, well, obviously, we'll continue to update the community and through the board.
When they realize what they've done.
All right, was there any other questions on anything we've seen so far? Want to go into now? Okay, so right now, I'm going to bring back up, Michelle, she's going to talk about our Arts-Music-Instruction Materials Block Grant, and the plan we have for that, and how that fits into our EUSD plan.
Okay, if you recall, in fiscal year 2023, we received $8 million in this Arts-Musical Instructional Block Grant. We received that money along with the LERT money, COVID money, all of the one-time monies we were receiving during this timeframe. We've held on to it up until this point, as part of our EUSD plan, where we're spending our most restrictive funds first, in order to be able to move our expenditures from our unrestricted funding sources into our restricted funding sources. This funding source has an expiration date of 6/26, next June. One of the reasons we kind of held on to this one as the last, is that it was the most flexible in our spending. So, we started using it this year. We transferred $184,000 from our homeschool program, that was previously residing in our LCFF supplemental and concentration. We used it this year, next year it's going back into LCFF. We've also moved $3.5 million of special education costs from our unrestricted to our restricted, more or less our contribution that we have to meet to be able to balance our restricted side of our special education. The original intent of that $3 million was to offset the increasing costs of special education, but with Patrick and his team, he's really been able to not have that cost, and we've been able to just move our existing costs into that. The $4.4 million, right now, when you saw in the multi-year projections as the commitment on the restricted side, the $4 million, that's the money we set aside in the event that our titles and our IDA money got pulled back from the federal government. At this moment, it doesn't seem like that revenue is going to be impacted for this year. If it does, we have it to offset the salaries of the positions being paid with those funding sources. In the event that we don't need to utilize it for that, we're going to want to be able to use that for instructional materials, our operational costs such as supplies, transportation, really the focus of it is taking our unrestricted expenses and moving it into our restricted column to utilize that funding source to free up our ending fund balance in our unrestricted column. The purpose of that is to alleviate the pressure that we're feeling, we are feeling with the $6 million cuts that we're going to have to make in those two out-years. At the end of the day, what we're really wanting to achieve with the EUSD plan in doing this movement of funding is to protect the people in our organization, the blue circle that Andy presented a couple, I think a second interim. This plan allows us to be able to do that, and use all of the funding that we have available in the best way possible. Now, Andy's going to present the best slide.
There's more. Oh, the forecaster. So really quickly, we've seen this before, this is the graphical version of our ending fund balances, we have two versions of it here, the black line, of course, on the bottom is that average minimum reserve requirement, and the dark blue line represents the adopted budget as we presented to you, which does include those reductions in expenses, or an increase in revenues, or a mix of those two. The other line represents if there is no new revenue, and there is no reduction in those expenses, and you can see that if that's the case, that we would be below our minimum reserve in the following year. So it's vitally important that we do receive those additional funds, and that we continue to find efficiencies and ways for us to reduce our expenses, and really be able to, without cutting, losing anything in that blue circle, and that represented the people of our district, and that's who we do all of our work here, all of the services provided, and everything we do for the community is through our people, our teachers, our classified staff, people in this room, and beyond. And so, it's vitally important that we continue to work hard to manage what we're doing here, and build from within to continue to improve our services here. So, thank you for everybody in helping us with that, and being a part of this district, and what we do. And quickly, the next steps, it's just the timeline of things to come, the, we'll adopt a budget that we bring up before you next Tuesday for vote, to adopt both the LCFF and the budget, and that plan we just showed you too, the Arts-Music-Instruction Materials Grant Plan, will be up before you next Tuesday. We will, they will adopt the budget, the governor will sign it by the end of the day on June 30th, hopefully, maybe sooner, they have to, by constitution, and 45-day revision, because there will be some of those things that will be added to some degree, hopefully more than what we saw today, that we'll come back and present to you in our August meeting, about what those changes are, and how that impacts what we showed you in our multi-year projection and the forecaster. And then, of course, we're going to continue to work on closing the books as we get past June 30th, to present that to you in September, how we ended the year, and then we'll finish out that year, that fiscal year that we're ending now, in January, we present the audited actuals. And that being said, questions on anything that we presented tonight, any slides I want to go back to? And thank you all again for bearing with us, it was a whole-year plan that we presented, so it took a long time, but thank you for bearing with us on that.
All right, questions?
Thank you. Can we go back to the estimated actuals and the 2024-25 proposed budget slide? Yeah, the two. So, can you help me simplify this, because it really helps when we're out in the community talking to people, to have very simplified terms of how our budget looks, and so, I would like to know, so if we look at our budget, we had $294 million, or $295, just about, right, total? And without adding anything, our expenses went up, without adding extra programs or anything, just our costs of everything, does that go, is that saying that goes up about $5 million to that $300 million? Just in very, very simple terms, does that make sense?
Well, one of the big drivers of our costs going up every year is we do have like our step and column, like, so the investment in our people, across our salary schedules going up, year over year, and so that will contribute to an increase in expenses every year, even if you added no new programs or anything like that. And because that, as I said, that blue circle is maintaining the people we have now, so without reducing people, you're going to continue to see that continue to rise.
So what does that look like? If we talk about step and column, declining enrollment, like the utility costs going up, or insurance costs?
Yeah, that's another cost that will go up.
All right, so is it roughly $6 million, or $5?
So the whole cost is not the people cost, there's other costs included in that, like, for instance, our insurance costs continue to go up. There was that, was it AB 218, one of the bills where some lawsuits can be filed from many, many years ago, 40 years, 30, 40-plus years ago, and that continues to drive up insurance costs across the entire state, for all school districts are seeing that. In fact, going into next year, we just found out a few weeks ago that our insurance costs for that excess insurance that'll cover some of those lawsuits, has gone up by another $400,000 annually. So, it was like two or three years, I think in 2021, it was in about $300,000, just a little less than that, and now we're up to, is it $1.2 million? We're up $1.2 million. So over the course of the last few years, it's gone up by a million dollars in the cost of insurance, and that's directly related to that law. Definitely, I understand, and very compassionate to what that law is about, but that's driving up the cost for all districts in our insurance costs to cover the costs of those lawsuits.
So, but in, again, nice round numbers.
Yes.
Thank you, Michelle, thank you for rescuing. So like, I just, because I like to be able to explain, like, this was our budget this year, every year our costs go up X amount, and so when you see the COLA of 2% or 3%, you can't just assume that's all can be extra money, because our costs already go up by a certain amount, and so I was just, I like to have that kind of ballpark number when I talk to people, to explain it, what that number is.
Okay, so to, you're asking two questions here. So I want to address the $6 million question that I think you're asking between the $294 and the $300, where that change comes from. In this particular scenario, that increase of the $6 million is really the change in the restricted column, because the expenses in '24, '25 is $115 million, and that then goes up to $121. The reason for that is how we have to account for our restricted programs such as ELOP, Title I, Educator Effectiveness, all of those type of funding. educator effectiveness, all of those type of funding sources. The real driving force on this is our carryover from ELOP and our carryover from Title I. So, you're seeing that. We, ELOP specifically, we weren't going to be able to fully expend that grant this year. So, we've reduced the expenses for that in the restricted column in 24, 25, and we transferred that expense to 25, 26 because we plan on spending it next year. So, that's really the driving force of that $6 million. Now, to go to the other question you asked, how we build our NYPD. When I'm looking at all of our salaries, on average, over a three-year span, our step in column is about 1.9% of our salaries. This year, it was actually 2.43%, I believe, which equates to roughly $4 million. The reason you're not really seeing that on reflective in the expenditures in this instance from the unrestricted of 179 to 178 is because we implemented all of those additional reductions of, I believe it was $8 million we made this year. So, we've calculated all of those costs and then we were able to reduce our expenditures. So, you're not seeing on paper that real increase of step in column in our ongoing expenditures. For everything other than salaries, we use the CPI rate, which I think this time was 2-point-something percent. And we apply that for the most part to our salaries and our services. Once we apply that, then I look to see what was potentially one-time in nature. Are we going to have that expense this year? Will we have it next year? We had the increase in our insurance. So, I've added that in addition to that flat rate of the percentage of natural increase of services and supplies.
So, what, I'm sorry, what was, I got the percentage. What was the dollar amount?
For the step in column?
Yeah.
It was four, I want to say it was 4-point-something.
Okay. And then, so what, I mean, again, just total numbers, like what? And again, I know these are nice round numbers, but if we add all that in, like, just our carrying costs from one year, just our increased costs from one year to the next, like, is that $6 million, $7 million? Like, again, just ballpark. Does that make?
Ballpark, it's going to be close to that $6 million because when I formulated the NYPD, everything rolls as it is, that increase of the 1.89% that I do for step in column and then the supplies and services increase. Once that's in there, then I look to see how much of the reduction do we need to be able to balance, to get to where we need to be. So, if you looked at the NYPD, simply probably add $6 million to that overall expenditure and that's just nature of progression.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to get at because, again, it just, you know, they, we have these COLAs and they're low and they're, oh, well, but then you have that full amount. And like you said, you don't get that full COLA amount. And we already start ourselves off in the hole per se by $6 million every year. So, just more as a informational thing to understand that. Okay.
It's not just, and it's not just the increased costs, but it's the loss of, through ADA.
That, well, yeah, with declining enrollment and that as well.
It's a two, two-front sword or fork or whatever. Yeah. But it, I was looking at the multi-year projections and they actually don't anticipate. And that's what made me look at the, the anticipated revenue, that, that's going down as well.
Right.
It's not rising as quickly in the, in the projections, for the multi-year projections, if you, if you look at those.
For the revenue?
Right, for the revenue.
The bulk of our revenue is tied to LCFF. And so, that $200 million, I want to say 188, 189 is LCFF. The only other revenue we get in unrestricted is the mandated block grant. The transportation add-on, which the transportation add-on is about $1.6 million. I do not recall the block grant off the top of my head. I think it's less than $2 million. You'll see some local revenue in interest. I think that, I mean, that's the big parts off the top of my head.
Okay, and so then in the multi-year projection, so with that $6 million, is that already, and you probably already said it, is that already included of $6 million reduction?
Yeah, so in 26, 27, the 177 million add $6 million to that. And that would have been the true increase in expenditures year over year.
Okay. All right.
Actually, a little bit more than that because you have to also look at the contributions of special education and of our routine restricted maintenance. We have to do, for routine restricted maintenance, we have to do 3% of the total expenses, expenses and transfers out. And so, as we spend more money, that 3% increases. And then, all of, the bulk of special education resides in the restricted column, but we don't receive enough money to fund that. So, we have to make the contribution from the unrestricted.
And actually, that brings, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask that. You, it was in the update about the cut to special ed. Could you go into detail about that a little bit?
Yeah, so for 24, 25, we received a million-dollar reduction in revenue. That's based off of the SALPA's ADA. We're one of the biggest districts within that SALPA, so we got the biggest cut from that. So, we really lost $2 million in revenue potential because we lost the revenue that we, from the state. But our expenses didn't go down. So, then we had to take a million dollars from our unrestricted, increase our contribution to do that. And that $2 million is playing out in the multi-year projections.
Okay. Okay. That was my budget questions. I had LCAP questions.
Okay, we have additional LCAP questions?
I have LCAP questions.
All right, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, so my question on the LCAP, and it's more of a global one because, so, I mean, we have our goals and maybe this means more of a question for you, but we have our goals, but I'm not understanding how we're going to, and I understand their goals, but a lot of like the stretch growth goals, you know, we're trying to get to, you know, even 50%. And we went down last year, yet our goal is to go up by 17% in two more years. So, I'm not understanding how we approve a document that seems unrealistic with the goals. Does that, does that make sense? Okay, so, so for example, let me, yeah, I'll rephrase. So, they have a ton of metrics. And so, let me get to the right page. So, for example, they're talking about the cap, right here, the distance from standard and, oh, no. Oh, no, that's the wrong one, sorry. I tried to highlight these. So, yeah, again, so, yeah, just the distance from standard. So, and a metric 1.1. So, like this one, all students were at, you know, below 42.5. It went to 42, which is actually an increase, but our goal in two more years is to be at a negative 30.5. So, we only gained half a point, yet we're expecting to jump by that much in two years. English learners, they actually lost four and a half, four, almost four and a half points. They went, you know, they went the wrong direction, yet we're, we have a goal of 50 step, 6.7. And these are just examples. So, I'm just, I'm not understanding how these goals come into play and how we look at the metrics compared to where the funding is going and if it's effective or not. And if that's something we should be concerned about, you know, when we, whenever we're approving these LCAPs.
So, in terms of setting the metrics, the, the metrics are set at the beginning of the LCAP. We're encouraged to have ambitious goals.
Right.
And in terms of our, our groups that perhaps need a little extra help, we're encouraged to set goals that will close the achievement gap. So, in other words, the expectation for the, the lower performing groups or the underrepresented groups would be more than the actual groups. So, it's, it's just the guidance that, that we're given for the LCAP, that we set some ambitious goals, knowing that we may not make those goals. But in terms of whether or not we continue the actions, we are required to reflect on each action and look at, at what type of, of growth we're making. For example, we did look at that winter growth where there were some areas that we did not make growth, which is why we wanted to, to say, okay, maybe we need to look at it again in the spring, which we are. Then, as, as we plan, we may be making some adjustments in, in what we're actually doing in, in terms of working with the, the teachers and the principals. But we can't, moving forward, at any time, we can change the actions.
Okay, yeah, because that, that's my, my thought process on this, how do I vote and, and, and put support behind something that the results aren't going in the direction, I think the efforts are great, but we're still not, and again, test scores aren't everything. But we, we are focusing on our data. I appreciate that we did winter to winter. That was, that was great to see, not fall to spring. But I, I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time grappling with that of seeing the decreases, spending millions, seeing the decreases and just continuing forward.
And the other thing to consider is at the end of the three-year plan, if we're not seeing growth, we are required to adjust the, the actions and goals.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm trying to be concise.
All right. Thank you very much. I believe that concludes our questions on the LCAP and
The budget?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. We are going to move on to item M1, Superintendent's Office, the agreement with the learner-centered collaborative. Dr. Ibarra.
Yes, before you say authorization to enter an agreement with the learner-centered collaborative, we have, they'll be providing the, the support for cohort one that are in redesign. Cohort two, which has now completed their planning phase and are ready to go into implementation phase. And then, looking to bring on cohort three, which would be an additional four to five schools that are interested in pursuing the redesign.
Okay, and may I ask how this is funded?
This, this year, we moved it out of the LCAP into the teacher effectiveness grant, which is a one-time funding source that we need to expend by the end of this year. And that is primarily designated, the restrictions for that funding source is professional development.
All right. And can I just, clarifying question, how long have we had agreements with the learner-centered collaborative?
So, this will be, we, the, this is going to be the third year? Yes, third year. First year was they facilitated the design team to, to help us draft the framework for the future. And then, the second year was the implementation of getting cohort one in and providing professional development on now, how do we action, how do we have everybody now start working towards implementing the framework for the future? And so, we've got great momentum with cohort one and two. We feel that giving everyone cohort two, I mean cohort one, will just need that additional year of year two planning. And then, we'll have them start, they're now way along in the process and they can help start facilitating and helping the other groups.
Okay, so the idea is that we would be sunsetting these agreements probably following next year, is that, is that?
Start working towards sunsetting that if the board desires, but we really, that work with each of the schools, it's personalized work for each school because they, it's not a one-size-fits-all. They're working with each school, each, each school community to really make it that school's reality. It's, so it's not, we're turning everyone into a Conway, we're turning everyone into a North Broadway, that it's really looking at that community personalized to what the teachers, parents and community within that, within that community are all looking towards.
So, it sounds like this is almost something that goes along the lines with what Ms. Harper was just discussing, which is if we're not seeing positive improvement over a period of time, and I don't think anyone here is satisfied with our student achievement as it is at this moment, we need to do something to, to change what we're doing, to disrupt what we're doing, and this is that, is that action.
And I'll, I'll just mention, remember, we also, through the design team, we came up with a dashboard and, which is, the dashboard we're using into a lot of our metrics. But they include more than, it's definitely the student achievement data, but we're also tracking a lot of the other metrics. So, it's much more than the, the achievement score and we want students who are able to critically think. So, how do we measure that? So, we're, we're looking at all those metrics, which we'll bring to the board in a subsequent board meeting. Okay, now, here's our dashboard results using our five-year plan. Remember, there were five big moves that we wanted to do and all of that, we're, we're bringing that. So, we'll have a thorough report for the board. We, just as we left the, left, right before break came up, the end of the school year, we actually had a survey, surveyed, surveyed our parents, surveyed our students about the types of activities that they were working on. Kind of, so that we can take a measurement of, is this starting to take hold into our classrooms? So, we've got a lot of different measurements that we're looking at. And as we bring the data, the achievement data with the dated, data book, we'll also be bringing all of the other metrics in play.
Okay, so that's the evaluation of progress that was questioned earlier. Questions and comments? Ms. Gardner?
Yeah, I, I have a comment and, and if we're funding that, we'll be funding with one-time funds.
Correct.
This coming year. And, you know, I've always said, and, and we've learned from school services early on, don't, don't establish something that you need to feed. Don't, don't buy into something that you have to feed. In other, in other words, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be using one-time funding for something that's ongoing. So, yes, I think we should be looking at winding down this program.
And Or creating a sustain, sustainability because once you have more cohorts. As everyone becomes a, a, they've all gone through redesign, now it becomes a principal meeting, right? They're not, they're all sharing their ideas.
They're all trained. The principals should be leading the cohorts. And I think that's a good idea because I'm afraid even with reducing by $6 million a year, we're still deficit spending. The, and that line is still, I'm, I'm thinking years beyond that when it, even, even with our reductions, we're going to have to look at a lot of the extras that we do, the consultancies. And with a fine red pen, go through them and, and see, think what's really, as if we were doing our household budget.
And one of the best uses of one-time money is in training.
Yes, to perpetuate.
Right, because it's not about hiring additional staff. It's about the staff that we have, making sure that they're able to sustain this and then they'll help us support one another, so.
But there has to be an end to the training.
Oh, absolutely.
Ms. Harper?
Okay, so how, so for $358,000, how many hours do we get for that?
I'd, I'd have to look at the, I have, I don't have the detail in front of me. I think it's, is it in the contract?
Because that seems like more than, you know, a couple of full-time, a couple of full-time teachers. My problem, I, I've never liked them. I, I, but I think the redesign needs to continue. We've started a program. We have to finish it. But again, I think we have established enough years of, of the training. I think, I would like to have, see other options than the learning center collaborative. I think we either could bring it in-house or do something temporary, but I, I just, this is a huge amount. And that's not even the full amount because what was the full amount on the LCAP? It's like almost $500,000?
Yeah, it was a little less than that, but that would include the substitute costs for pulling the teachers out for the full day with, spent with the LCC.
Yeah, $457.
And then, we also provide them some planning time so that the principal and the, and the teachers can have more work time, discussion time. teachers can have more work time, discussion time, so they can put it all together.
Because I'm not, I'm not questioning the redesign process. I think that's really reinvigorating our school sites and really getting our educators and our staff excited, and the students excited, and really engaging them. But at the same time, I mean, this could be multiple in-house people for that same amount, even less than that, I don't even want to spend this much on it. So I, I would like to see other options of how we can either scale it down, or how we can do something on our own with what we've already learned from them over the many, many years they've been here. Because I think we do have the capability to do it ourselves.
And so just to clarify, that amount in the LCAP, that $457,000, that is not going to the learner-centered collaborative, is that correct?
No, just the amount, the contract amount on this item is what, is the contract cost for the LCC. The other amount above that, that goes up to the 400 and something amount, that's for the sub-costs and the planning time.
That's for the site-based planning time, because this does take a significant amount of time. And it's also one of those things that, that just, to get on to my thing, is, it is professional development, but it's also really having our teachers take control of their schools, which, and that's site-based leadership at the teacher level, classified staff level, and the site principal level are, that is vital. That's where all positive change takes place. So, but for the moment, I, I will say I am in support of continuing with the learner-centered collaborative, at least for this year and next year, so that we have continuity with that program. But we should let people know that we're going to be moving to a, a locally controlled change process, and have them pick up on what that's going to look like. And there are a number of models of this. There are organizations in California that do this very similar work, but you do it yourself. And I will say, the learner-centered collaborative, in my observation, has a way of leading it that makes it far more meaningful, efficient, and effective for the school site. So with that, I'd like to see if there's a motion to approve or, to approve this item.
Motion.
You're going to have to second. I'll vote for it, but...
Okay, and so Mr. Houston moves, Mr. Paulson seconds. Any further discussion?
Don't vote for it.
Because I'm afraid I, I cut you off. Okay, then please vote, and it's already up on your screen.
Mine. There it is.
Oh, I am so sorry, it didn't come up on my agenda. Passes three yay, one nay, one not present, Mr. Olson did have to leave. Moving on to item M2, Educational Services, Adoption of Reading Difficulty Screener, Amplify M-Class with Dibbles.
So I'd like to have Mr. Oser come to the podium again, he will take us through this with a very brief presentation on the dibbles.
Keyword there is brief. Good evening again, President Paulson, Board members, Superintendent Ibarra, and Cabinet members. It's a privilege to be up here again to share another ed services project. This is a requirement that all school districts not only have to go through the process of reviewing, going through a pilot process, and then making a committee recommendation, and then eventually a board approval with implementation for next year. So I will be super brief, just give you a quick overview of ED Code 53008, which is the requirement to bring in the reading difficulty risk screener. And we know that screening is a key piece to a solid instructional program. Much of what's been discussed today under this new addition will be able to support us with providing that tier-two and tier-three intervention, so identifying these students very early on. So from the 2025-26 school year onwards, according to this new ED Code, schools must use a screening instrument annually to screen all students in kindergarten through second grade unless parents opt out. In addition, schools will also screen new students within 45 days of enrollment. So once we establish our screening window, the student comes and enrolls in one of our schools, we need to screen that student before the 45 days expires. And then also, real critical, the screening shall not be used for any high-stakes purpose or as a diagnosis of a disability. So also important to note, if a student has a disability that adversely impacts their reading performance, they have IEP goals for, for reading, then that student doesn't need to be screened. And logically, that's because the student has already gone through the process, and we've already identified that student not only is at risk, but does have reading difficulties. So that's a quick overview. Also want to share, this is in direct alignment with our multi-tiered system of support. We already have a screener in, in place for, for social-emotional learning, our SABERS, we administer that screener, and we use that data to inform practices. Now we'll have the same type of screener in the area of literacy for our kindergarten first and second graders. On the pilot process, so this has turned around really quickly. We, the state actually identified the four state-approved screeners that we could consider in January. So that was January of this year with the requirement that school boards had to make an approval by June 30th. So immediately, we actually turned around and, and put together a screening committee, which included 24, 24 teachers, teachers from every single elementary school, also included DLP teachers, special education teachers, our content area specialists, MTSS site specialists, as well as literacy intervention teachers, administrators, and we, we dove into the process. Interestingly, again, sometimes you wonder, but California identified the four screeners, only three of them actually met the requirement of being in reading, or being in English and Spanish and kindergarten first, second. Great. So right off the bat, the screening committee was able to take one of those measures off the, off the table and focus in on the, the other three. So the next step was the, the committee came together, and we actually had an overview of, from the publishers for all three, AMIRA Amplify, as well as the UCSF multitudes screener. After that process, we identified that there would be two screeners that we really wanted to consider more closely, and that was AMIRA and Amplify. Teachers were trained, it was a bit of a crash course, because we're on a tight timeline, so they were trained and administered both AMIRA and Amplify to a, a select group of students from their class, and it was the same students. So they really weren't looking at the scores of the students, they were actually evaluating the instrument. And so that was the big focus of, of the process. They had a rubric, and they looked at it very closely to see, is this the, the right one for our district and community? Throughout the process, they identified the pros and cons, and then the goal was to work towards consensus. And, and this is the results from after we came together, we had lots of thorough discussion, and you can see there that the majority of the, of the screening committee members were really strongly in favor of Amplify. And there were three participants, an administrator and a teacher from one school, and another teacher who actually wasn't able to join that final meeting. We gave her the consent to go ahead and vote. I reached out to all three of those stakeholders, all three of those committee members, discussed the, the conversation that happened after the voting. All three of them were in favor of moving forward with Amplify. So we did have consensus with, with the screener, which was really good to, to move forward with. Briefly, want to talk about costs. There's been a lot of conversations today about our financial situation. CDE's allocation will cover the cost, which includes the, the licenses in English as well as the Spanish licenses. Students whose first language is Spanish, they will, and they're considered newcomers, they will actually be screened in Spanish. If they're in the DLP program, then instead of doing the English screening, they will receive the, the Spanish screening, because their instruction is in Spanish, and that will inform their instruction. And it will also provide funding for professional development. And next steps, so this, as I mentioned, this, the state requirement is that governing boards do receive a presentation and, and then make an action to approve the recommendation. We hope that that happens today. And then we're going to gauge in the, the important work of the implementation plan, because actually going through the screening process, making a recommendation, that's the easy part. It's the implementation that's going to take quite a bit of time. The members of the screening committee, they've all been invited back to be part of the implementation team. And so we're, we already met once and started discussing like what this would actually look like, and how this would support our, our goals instructional program. So part of the implementation plan will be to focus on communication with families and staff, developing a professional development plan, looking at our existing assessment calendar, and then seeing where this screener would fit into the assessment calendar, and then plan for administration. And by the way, we have a new, a new acronym to add to our lexicon, RDRS, kind of sounds like RDR, R2D2. So, but another acronym that we'll add, because reading difficulty risk screener is way too long. So that's the overview of the presentation and the committee's recommendation, and...
All right. Thank you very much. And we need to vote on this one? Or to adopt it? I got it.
We do need to vote.
All right. So looking for a motion to adopt?
Oh, I have a quick question.
Oh, go.
Not about the screener, just what happens, so if they are diagnosed, then what happens?
That's an excellent question, and there's a slide here, I can't go back to. But that's actually the important work. So when we look at our multi-tiered system of support and the different levels of intervention, so if a student is identified as being red-flagged, then obviously we need to, as teachers, we need to then strategically support that student. And then this will dovetail directly into the great work that's been happening around revamping our CSAT process and our students' study teams. So this is just going to give us a red flag to identify which students need that tier-two, tier-three intervention, and then the important work is now we need to intervene. So just like with the SABERS and social-emotional learning, so once we get that information of red flags, then we, then now we're called to action that we need to intervene. So, so knowing this early on is going to be really critical. And having the screener in kindergarten first, second grade, we know, as Trustee Gardner shared before, it's those early grades that we really want to double down on and provide that intensive intervention.
I think an important, I think an important part, too, is to identify students with dyslexia, because that's a common problem that's not often addressed in the early grades and could cause problems, so...
Exactly, and this screener is, it's norm reference, and so it's really designed to, to identify those students that are at risk of dyslexia or at risk of significant reading difficulties, with the intent to intervene then, as well as inform families, to make sure that families are part of the, the intervention plan.
So basically, it's a, they passed a new law, a new state law, that we have, have to identify students who are going to have problems.
We, we want to identify them early, so that they can receive additional in-class supports, so they don't eventually get to the CSAT process.
But then it's up to us, as a district, to develop the plan to address these deficiencies if, if they exist.
And I think one of the really important things will be to recognize that a lot of these difficulties can be addressed within a regular education classroom, so that they don't get to the point of needing potentially special education services, and to recognize that a lot of these interventions, most of these, the vast majority of these interventions can be done within our regular classroom at the tier-one, tier-two levels.
If it's known, and that's where differentiation comes in as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Ms. Harper moves, Ms. Gardner seconds. All in favor, please vote. Motion passes four to zero with one member not present. Moving on to item N3, Business Services.
So we talked about earlier with our public hearing, this technically is an item for the, before the board to close the school limit list. Of course, what we've talked about is we're converting that into a program, so for the students, very much the same program.
Thank you. All right. Looking for a motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Houston moves, Ms. Harper seconds. All in favor, please vote. And motion passes four to zero with one not present. Moving on to item N4, Business Services, Resolution 2024-25-29, Emergency Waiver for the Central School Main Waterline Failure.
So last week, we had a waterline break under a bathroom building at Central Elementary School, where we're also going to be having some summer programming, and so in order for us to complete this repair and get that back up and running in time for that program and just for the school in general, we're asking the board to declare that an emergency, approving the emergency waiver, which lets us, precludes us from doing the bidding requirements. Of course, we still would work to, to get the lowest price possible and the best work done, but this will allow us to complete that work rapidly. And most of the waterline's repaired, now we have to put back the concrete that surrounds that bathroom.
Very good. Thank you.
I move approval.
Ms. Harper moves?
Second.
Ms. Gardner seconds. All in favor, please vote. Motion passes four to zero with one not present. Moving on to item M5, Resolution 2425-30, Del Dios and Rock Springs closures.
So many months ago, if you recall, we had that lithium battery plant catch on fire nearby, this building, which caused us, because of the air pollution potential, to close for a day the Del Dios Academy, as well as Rock Springs. This resolution allows us to then file the J-13 waiver, which lets us get some relief for the ADA lost on those two days, and so we're catching up on that one.
I move approval.
Second.
Ms. Harper moves, Mr. Houston seconds. All in favor, please vote. Motion passes four to zero with one not present. Moving on to Board and Staff Reports, Ms. Gardner.
Okay, this time I'm ready. It was a busy time between our, the last board meeting and now, but it was, it was a lot of fun, too. I have to say, I had a tour of the mission site, the new construction. I was so impressed, and I was also impressed with our project manager, Sterling, who is so dedicated to what he does. I, I was really, really thrilled to think that we have someone who cares as much as if it were his own as a project, so, and it's coming along beautifully. It's just going to be really an attractive school that kids will want to be in. I hope they will appreciate it. I also attended Quantum's 10th Anniversary Celebration, which was a lot of fun. I also attended Quantum's 10th anniversary celebration, which was a lot of fun, ran into some, some old, some people I had known for a long time and just enjoyed the enthusiasm of the, of the students and their projects there. And the time capsule got opened, which was fun too. I attended the Kathy Shirley Garden, Memorial Garden dedication, which was a lovely affair with Kathy's family there, her son and grandson and sister. So, so her family was well represented and I think it's a fitting tribute to someone who was so instrumental, so important to our district and the progress of our district in IT. I also was happy to attend the Nets colloquium. And I have, all of these events, the garden dedication and the colloquium occurred in our new location outside that, so beautifully designed and done now that we, we can get so much use out of it. Plus, I can't wait for those fruit trees to grow and start to bear and enclose us with greenery and fresh air. So meanwhile, the garden is thriving. I looked out at the tomato plants today, it was delight and they're really doing well. As I'm, I'm going to have to sneak out and see if there are any ripe tomatoes yet, but I know the peppers are growing. And I also, I'm always, the Nets colloquium is so valuable because it's only so, it's so enriching to, to meet these new teachers who are so enthusiastic and have such plans for their, for their classrooms. And I wasn't, as every year, there's always one who impresses me mightily. And, and the one this year was a preschool teacher who was planning ahead and thinking of her students moving on to TK and getting the curriculum for TK for math and preparing her students so that when they went into TK, they would be ready. They would be ready for the, for the next step in math. So I, I just thought that was so wonderful and it turns out that she actually got her credential and will be teaching TK. But, and I asked her if she knew that at the time she had planned this and she said no. But it was, it was personalized learning for her whole class and I just thought it was a wonderful thing to do. High expectations always have good results, I think. So also, I was pleased to attend the city council meeting where our teacher, county teacher of the year, Karina Martinez, was honored once again, well deserved. And I, I talked to her afterwards and I was reminded of what Dr. Ibarra talked about at the colloquium, that people, everyone remembers the one teacher in their life that made a difference, that encouraged them and, and that they'll always, they still remember their name and how much they admired them and, and the inspiration they were. And I told her she was one of those teachers and she, she truly is. So we're very, very proud of her. And what else? I also attended the Ignite Awards Ceremony at the end of the year. Ah, you forgot.
I forgot.
Yes, which I'm always so pleased to be at that because you wouldn't believe every year, even though there's always a turnover and for the years that I've been going, there were different, different kids participating, but it's consistently such, such talent, such absolute talent. And that goes back to the coaching. And so especially to, to all the coaches that are involved, but especially to Veronica Casanova, special thanks for her dedication to this program and her inspiration because it means a lot to those, those kids. And some of them may eventually go on to professional, be professional dancers as well, but at least it gives them exposure to another avenue. I also represented the board at the Bear Valley Promotion Ceremony and, and this is why I was concerned about Limitless. I'm glad that it will still exist in basically the same manner, even though the designation is different. Now it's a program and not a separate school. But I attended the Limitless Promotion Ceremony and was so impressed, along with, with Mrs. Harper, was so impressed by the students who spoke, not just one, but there were a number of them. They articulated so well the, the benefits they had gotten from the program. And that was, Limitless is a true individualized education program and some kids need that. And it's made a difference in those kids' lives. So I'm glad we will continue that program as well as the home education program. That's what we try to do, to personalize education for our kids as much as we can. Also, I watched a video and I, I'm not sure how beneficial this is going to be, but you know, I'm really concerned about our math program and about children who, who are deficient in, in math expertise because that's a lifelong need to, to be proficient in math. So it was called the Future of Math Instruction. I don't know if you all received an invitation to this, but it was put on by an organization called CLEO. It's the California Local Elected Officials. That, so in any case, I, I took what from it, what I could, but I've always been involved in, in advocating for, for better math instruction and better math literacy. And that's my report. I tried to make it as quick as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Houston.
Okay, so I was able to attend the Rincon Middle School Promotion, which was outstanding. Had to say goodbye to Mr. White, which I was kind of disappointed, I've known Mr. White for many years. My daughter went to Rincon, I was a music booster president and it was very well put on by Mr. White and he is always on time and on task when it comes to that. And we had a really good discussion about his future and what he's going to be doing, but it was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed it and he will be missed because I think he's done a fantastic job. Additionally, I want to thank all the staff here, also at all the schools, all the teachers for all the hard work that they have done this year. It's very much appreciated and we are very proud of what they've done and we look forward to the accomplishments in the future. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Harper.
I think Joan and I should have carpooled more this last couple of weeks. We went to a lot of the same events, so I'll run through them quickly. I went to the Quantum Expo with her. The Kathy Shirley Memorial Garden was fabulous. The Nets colloquium, if I can say the word. But I actually had one of our teachers, I had her last year during, she was at my table for her first year and so then she was also at my table for her second year and she's one of our music teachers and that was great to see her, her evolution and how she's, you know, grown over these last two years. And then she's finally done, that's always the best when they're done after their two years and they can take a deep breath. And then, it, it really is. And then one of the other teachers at my table, I remember her when she first got hired because she was working at Starbucks. And I was, I drove through and, you know, have that conversation of how's your day? And she's like, oh, this is great, it's my last day. I go, oh, what you're do, what are you doing? She goes, I'm going to go, go to the school district. I got hired to be a teach, an art teacher in this new program called The Wheel. I go, oh, well, you're going to love it, it's very exciting.
Was there a line behind you?
No, I don't care.
I mean, I can see this, come on lady.
So, but then she went from an arts teacher and then we moved her into C. So it was a great, interesting year to see her transition and what that all entailed. But always a wonderful program put on by the Nets team, I mean, their care and energy for the teachers is really impressive. So thank them for doing such a great job. I went to the Ignite Ceremony, which is always fabulous. And then also the city council meeting, which, you know, if none of you know that June 4th is now officially the Mrs. Martinez Day in Escondido in her honor. And then I, I went to Mission Middle School for their dual language program awards of recognition ceremony, which is always packed. I mean, we were, I was out on the sidewalk trying to push my, trying to push my way and so we need to find a bigger, I think they're going to move it outside next year.
The parking is.
Oh, the park, oh, you don't want to see where I parked. I did not park legally, but that's okay. But Frank wasn't there to give me a ticket, so it was okay. But yeah, that, that place was packed and everyone is, it's always great when they get dressed up and they're really proud of their accomplishment because that's a hard, that's hard work to go through the elementary and the middle school program.
You just mentioned parking and this is, this is a little bit of a segue, but I was reading about the city of San Diego is ticketing cars.
On the corner.
There's a new law, is that a state law?
Yeah, yes. It's just depending on the cities, how they are enforcing it.
Yeah, well, they're, they were, they were touting how much money they're making.
Right, exactly.
Plus, they raised the fine from $77 to $117.
I know. I also attended the DAC meeting, the last DAC meeting of the year. It was a great presentation by Kathleen. I really appreciate how she lays out the LCAP for everyone and tells them very clearly, sorry, and simply what, what we're spending our money on and why. And then there was also multiple comments during there about the TK program and positive feedback of, there were several parents in there that were new to the district, you know, this is our first kid in TK and they were very energized about what their schools and the programs that they're in. I also got up very early, way earlier than I normally do, to go to the Kiwanis Club because our own principal from Oak Hill, Dr. Madrigal, was the speaker. And it was great, our principals are just wonderful. So it's really great to see them out in the community. Everyone at that meeting was very impressed with the programs and what she had to say about her school and the programs she's running there. So I thank her for getting up, but she probably didn't have to get up as, she's usually there early anyway, but I appreciate her effort to really reach out to the community so they are aware of the great things that we're doing. Because I think that's part of our jobs and, but I think that's also, all of our staff and all of our teachers should be ambassadors of our district. Because again, the more people that come to the district, the better programs we can create. I also went to the YMCA where they gave away bikes to Lincoln Elementary students who had perfect attendance. So that was great. They got a helmet, they got, the Escondido PD brought lights for them and they were, they got to start riding them around the gym. So I think that was a great, hopefully next year, you know, they can keep that going.
How many were there?
Uh, there was 28. Yeah, 28. Not all of them were there though to get the bike.
That is what happens at perfect attendance ceremonies every time.
But, and I don't know, speaking of bikes, I mean, we have the helmets and they have the lights, but I don't know if it would be something, we could get donations for bike locks. So when they do take them home, I mean, something of that nature to protect them, I mean, you might know.
I, I think there's actually been a lot of discussions surrounding the bike giveaways because there's a real question of, you know, the families aren't necessarily requesting the bikes, there's not necessarily safe places for the kids to ride and there's a real question of after six months, where are those bikes? And so I, I think that's a, a big question that a lot of our service organizations, you know, when they're giving away bikes to an entire grade level, you know, it's kind of a discussion in, in the service clubs right now of this is something we want, but the families don't necessarily have any say and all of a sudden the kid shows up with a bike and there's a real question of. Well, there's not necessarily a safe place to ride it. Mr. McGuire is working on a plan to get some instruction for the kids when they are given bikes and some follow-up. But yeah, I, I think that if we're going to, I mean, certainly we are very appreciative when community groups are giving anything to our students, but, but I think we've got a real responsibility to sort of coordinate and make sure that they are being used effectively. Mr. McGuire.
On the plan.
On the plan.
Yeah, so we, I know that when an organization working with Rotary and some other donors provide bikes to a whole grade level at a school, at one of our schools fortunately every year so far for many years. And so we want to do in conjunction with that is that there would be bike lessons, safe, safe use of the bike, how to ride the bike in some cases, right then and there. So hopefully we can start growing a, a population of students that are students that actually might be riding their bikes.
And maybe like events at the school with the bike or.
Right.
Community events with the bikes.
Absolutely. I think starting a bike rodeo, but a, you know, a learn to ride the bike on the same day as they're being given away, like they did at the YMCA, it sounds like. And, and I think we've got a firm plan and an organization to do that. But then after that, having follow-up biking trips around the block, you know, the last one was at Far Elementary and, you know, living across the street from Far Elementary, the first thing you see as you leave Far Elementary is a memorial to a, an absolutely wonderful young man who was killed there at the beginning of this school year. And so it's not necessarily a safe place to bike. And I think we need to make sure that as, as vehicles of any kind are leaving our campuses, that there is a plan for them to be used safely and effectively. Because if they're being given on our campus, the idea of just sending the kid home onto Highway 78 on a new bike when, you know, that's, that's concerning. That's concerning, so.
I have one last item. I represented the board at Quantum's promotion, really well done. And it was really touching that they, one of our students that passed away last year in an accident, junior, he was honored at the ceremony because he would have been an eighth grader. So they had a chair reserved for him and they made a presentation to his family. And then we had 17, 77 seconds of silence because that was his jersey number. But it was, you could see his impact with his fellow students because some of them even had stools that had his name or his, his picture on them as well. So I really appreciate that they took the time to honor one of their students in, in a moment of joy as well. So that was my report.
All right. And so just to finish up, I was able to go to the Corona Expo and was very happy to hear the name again of Dr. Arthur Nicolason, who actually was the inspiration for that facility back when it was our separate special education school where all of the kids with moderate and severe disabilities were sent. Very, I, I remember Dr. Nicolason fondly. I remember his son who inspired the school very fondly and his daughter was very happy to hear that he had been mentioned at that. And I was also reminded of how happy I am that our moderate and severely handicapped students are now on every school site. But Quantum Expo was outstanding. Kathy Shirley Garden Dedication, again, outstanding. And having known Kathy Shirley since seventh grade at Grant Middle School, it's a special time. I should say Kathy Wallace. Del Dios Promotion was, was excellent. And Mission Middle School Promotion, the one where I always wear my hat to, to protect myself somewhat from the sun, was indoors this year at the Center for the Arts. It was very nice, very nicely done. If we were to do that again, and I know their field will be open next year, we need the big theater. We got to have the big theater because as we left, there were hundreds of people inside and hundreds of people outside waiting for the grad, for the promoters to leave. So it was, it was really well done. It just wasn't space. And when people are promoting at Mission Middle School, you either need a football field or you need the big theater. And I'm not even sure that the big theater would have been adequate, but, but it would have been closer. And that's it. Dr. Ibarra.
No, just wishing all our teachers and staff a very well-deserved summer. And a big thank you to our summer school teachers and staff who are preparing to begin the summer program. So I think they, they're prepping this week and next week. So I think they they're prepping this week, and next week they start.
The next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM at the Escondido Union School District, Carolyn Gilbert Education Center, twenty-three ten Alder Grove Avenue, Escondido, California, nine two zero two nine. We are adjourned.